Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 8th Planning Commission meeting. If you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, if you would please silence those now or turn them off, we would appreciate that. Better check my own. I've managed to let it go off before. If you are not the applicant and you're here to address us on a case today, there are sign-up sheets, they look like this, they're on the table right outside the chambers, and if you would complete that, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the particular case you're interested in. And with that, I'll take a motion to receive the minutes of the August 25th meeting. We have a motion and a second to receive the minutes, cast your votes, and those are received. And the next item, JJ, is continuance requests.
We have three uncontested continuances. The first is item 25, PC 10408, request to deferral to September 22nd. Item 26, DA 24692, defer to September 22nd. Item 27, C 6831, deferred to October 27th.
There'll be some additional ones. Is there anyone here who came to address us on those items today? In that case, I'll take a motion on the uncontested continuances.
Move to move the uncontested continuances.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes, and those are approved. And now we have additional requests.
Several new requests, these are all requested to be deferred to September 22nd. Item 2, PC 10462. Item 5, CE 940. Item 6, SPUD 917. Item 14, PUD 1622. Item 22, PUD 1620. And item 28, the plan OKC presentation.
I have the same question for items 2, 5, 6, 14, 22, and 28 on our agenda. Did anyone come to address us on those today? I'll take a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the additional requests for continuuses. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Hearing none, JJ? We'll go to the consent docket.
Consent docket, as items 1 and 3, that's ABC 859 and ABC 2, located at 1101 Northwest 11th Street. And item 3, PC 10466, request to rezone to the I-2 Modern Industrial District at 307 North Meridian Avenue.
Anyone interested in items 1 or 3 today? If not... Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, cast your votes. Commissioners, reminder to use your microphones, please.
I got a question. Item number 2, on the consented agenda, and it's been pulled. How does that work?
The applicant requested the continuance in order to meet with neighbors.
Even though it was on the consent... I don't think I've ever seen one like that before.
Well, we've had consent items pulled by commissioners before, or by protesters, the public, but... Did you want to tell us about it, Dave?
Yeah, David Box, 522 Call Cord. We have met with the neighbors once, Mr. Johnson and I, as well as our client. We met with the Board of Directors. They were going to go back to the bigger neighborhood, and we told them we would wait to have it heard before we... So that they could allow the whole neighborhood to weigh in on it. But we think we are really close to everybody being happy with what we have, and we hope to get there on the 22nd. But that's why...
Thank you. Okay, well, good. Items requiring individual consideration.
First item for public hearing is item 4, SPUD 918, application by OKC Class &amp; Curve to rezone 5829 Northwest Grand Boulevard.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Stephen Harris with Washington Prime, who's been from Columbus, Ohio today. This is, if you're familiar with the Class &amp; Curve, the grassy area between the two parking spots. It's always been contemplated that future development would be here, but over the course of the last 10 years or so, as Class &amp; Curve has been developed and zoned, what this piece was left at was partially in one PUD, partially in another SPUD, and within that one SPUD, it was in a parking only. And so what we're trying to do through this SPUD is to allow development consistent with what you see throughout the curve. We've included the same uses that are allowed within the curve. We have spoke to Mr. Rob Littlefield, who is a neighbor to the south, that is, this commission's aware, was very involved initially with Class &amp; Curve, and it's my understanding now that he is comfortable with the SPUD as it's presented. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we hope for your approval.
Well, David, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Because I've received an email from Mr. Littlefield dated Wednesday, yesterday, and he's got some requests, and I don't know if he's conveyed these to you.
He has. The first two we're in agreement with, and the third we've worked out with not only him but Commissioner Powers as well.
Okay, well, let's talk about them specifically when you say 1, 2, 3.
I believe there was three items. One dealt with dumpster locations.
Yes.
We have sent him an exhibit showing what we've done is modified the SPUD so that the dumpster locations would be north of the south line. What he was concerned about were dumpsters being south of the building. So they'll either be east of the building or west of the building, properly screened, just like the rest of the curve is.
Okay, and what about the uses permitted and prohibited which he raised an issue of?
With the coffee, tea, et cetera, we have added that language as well.
Okay.
And the third issue deals with special events. There has been an issue with one of the tenants perhaps having a special event. My client was not aware of it. He has let all the tenants know that anytime you have a special event, not only does my client need to sign off on that, but there is now a process through the city. There is a gentleman here who handles all special event permits, and so it's handled by ordinance. They're going to have to go through the proper procedure, not only with my client, but also with the City of Oklahoma City, and I have spoke at length on this topic with Ms. Powers.
The client has agreed that they will make the neighborhood aware of those special events that are proposed so that they can participate in the process of the city's issuance of a permit, so...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that all of these points were touched.
Sure, absolutely.
Has the ownership taken care of the sign situation as well?
Yes, we do need to add a sign that's been taken care of. It'll be a sign that matches the signs that are already there. No freestanding accessory signs are permitted within this SPUD.
Right. Okay.
I did have an email from Rob Littlefield, who's the president of the Meadowbrook Neighborhood South of the Class &amp; Curve, this morning, indicating that he had spoken both to David Box and to Tim Johnson, and was happy with what they had resolved, so...
Okay, well, no one has signed up.
Then I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved.
Items 5 and 6 were deferred to September 22nd. Item 7 is C 6845, final plat of Westminster Heights, located south of Northwest 50th Street and east of Western Avenue.
I'm Derek Turner, I represent Turner Company, that is the developer of the project.
This could have easily been on the consent docket, Commissioners, I think, as I look at it. No one has signed up.
We've been through this, both with the zoning and with the preliminary plat, so...
Yeah.
If nobody else wants to speak, and Commissioners don't have any comments, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 7. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 8, C 6846, final plat of Still Meadows Phase 4, located south of Northwest 164 Street, east of North MacArthur.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. We've reviewed the staff report, and we're in agreement with the TEs. There was some discussion in the staff report with regard to the additional entrance on 159th Street to MacArthur, which a variance would be required to have the spacing which is less than 500 feet. I've spoken to my commissioner of my ward, and he's not in support of the variance. The original preliminary plat showed a cul-de-sac at the end of 159th Street. I don't know how it happened, but a house got built in there, and there's a gravel drive currently serving the house. So there is room to put a cul-de-sac back in, back up to the MacArthur right-of-way. This is the house as it exists today. This would be the street right-of-way, and so there's room here to put a cul-de-sac here to do that. It doesn't allow for as good of circulation in the plan as you would have with the second point of ingress and egress, but I also respect the Commissioner's position on trying to hold to the sub-racks at 500 feet, so... My understanding is... Am I correct in understanding that?
Don't hear that very often.
So we're in agreement with the TEs, and I guess we would have to add a TE that we would revise the final plat to include a cul-de-sac before it goes...
Well, just revise it to conform to the original preliminary plat.
Yes.
That would take care of it?
Yes.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? No one's signed up. With the cul-de-sac, obviously, with...
With the cul-de-sac, I move approval as a redesign.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 8. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 9 is CE 937, application by Lucas, Tammy, and Michael, Invocable Trust, closing the 60-foot street right-of-way, located at the north of 1220 Northwest 51st Street.
Sorry about that. Tim Johnson again, on behalf of the applicant. This is a unique situation, and your staff report in front of you has a lot of negatives in it. Unfortunately, we talked to the staff and had a long conversation with Public Works, and an email went out from Public Works to the planning staff late Friday, and so it didn't get really incorporated in the staff report that you all have seen. Public Works does not object to this closing at this point, and we met with the Fire Marshal Office, and the Fire Marshal does not object to this closing. The strange event that has occurred, as you know, that the city and the state work together to put a frontage road as opposed to an access on 51st Street, so one-way frontage road. There's two driveways in front of this office building, which is owned also by American Fidelity. There's one access into Edna's, and in the back of their offices is 51st Street, of which this office has two drives, and Edna's has one drive. The representative for Edna's has negotiated a lease with ODOT. ODOT owns all this property, including this property and where the highway exits. So technically, the cul-de-sac's owned by ODOT. ODOT has agreed to lease them a portion of these two lots to allow them to expand their parking in this area. What that will allow Edna's to do is to increase their parking capacity, keep people from parking on the street, and as part of that, when we come in for a building permit, we will have to show that we can make fire circulation through the parking lot, which is standard procedure. And so when we discuss that with Public Works, we're okay with the closing at this point. We do not think we're going to vacate it. It's just closing it so that they can park on it.
We do have someone who wants to speak to us, Ann Nicholson from American Fidelity If you would give us your name and address, please.
Sure. That's Ann Nicholson, and I'm with the Law Department of American Fidelity, speaking on behalf of the property company. Our address is 9,000 Cameron Parkway, Oklahoma City.
Zip code's okay.
Okay, sorry. I was asked to come today and to convey our concerns about the closing of the right-of-way and the cul-de-sac, allowing it for parking, on the concern, as you know, American Fidelity Property Company owns the other two office buildings on that lot, and if that right-of-way is closed, and we're concerned about increased traffic into our parking lot and potential danger to our tenants, other people were concerned about fire being able to turn around. We're just have some genuine concerns that the unintended consequence towards the other two buildings on this property will be negatively impacted.
Okay, well, emergency services apparently have cleared this from their standpoint. They're thinking they can get in and out.
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious how they think they can do that if that's being used for parking. You know, currently, Edna's customers use American Fidelity's parking lot for parking, and we've consented to that, not affirmatively, but just by allowing it to happen.
Probably the hours don't necessarily intersect for parking, I mean...
Because I think we believe that the likelihood is that they're going to begin using the American Fidelity parking lot, that the traffic will increase significantly, and that that heavier traffic will impact us.
Thank you. Tim, any response?
The method that the Fire Marshal indicated that he was okay with is this, just like in any other parking lot serving a business, including your office building to the west, they look at circulation around islands. So if they get in your parking lot, they want to be able to turn around and come out. The same thing would occur here. As additional parking is paved, the circulation would have to be such that they can come in, and they can turn around, and then go back out. The American Fidelity parking lot is very well-signed at this point, and I think it's part of the reason for gaining additional parking is to avoid the conflicts that are there. Their parking lots are well-signed, and I assumed that it was... There were some conflicts with parking at the lunch hour and things like that, because I know they get busy at lunch sometimes. And there's... These parking lots are not connected, so there won't be cross-traffic from Edna's crossing over to the east American Fidelity building. It would be trying to get their parking all on property that they control by the new lease with ODOT. So we didn't see it as... From a traffic perspective, we didn't see the fact that the American Fidelity's driveways would not be affected by this. So any turnaround for American Fidelity employees can occur in their parking lot. You can enter in two locations here, and you can exit in two locations. Of course, it's one-way west as you leave, because this is a one-way frontage road. So that's the way we looked at it. We have not had an opportunity to talk. Staff knew that somebody had called, but they didn't get a name. So if I haven't satisfied their concerns, we can continue, and I can meet with them if that's the commission's wish.
Ms. Nicholson, does that explanation satisfy you, or you still have concerns?
Yeah, I think that you still have concerns.
Well, Tim is willing to continue this for two weeks and meet with you, and see if you can kind of become satisfied with whatever compromises might be required. All right, so we'll take a motion to continue this for two weeks. We have a motion and a second to approve item 9, to continue it for two weeks. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you both.
Item 10, PUD 1621, application to rezone 9300 Southwest 44th Street to the planned unit development district.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Jason Spencer, who's a civil engineer on this project. This is a project that we came before the Planning Commission and City Council several years ago, and at the time, you might recall, we did have some protests. This was an area that had this pressure of urban development, but still had some existing rural development because of lack of water and sewer. In fact, this neighborhood itself has a split, with some areas being served by sewer, some not. And so what we ended up with was a mix of larger half-acre and acre lots, R1 and R1ZL. We took some R1ZL off the table at that time, specifically to satisfy the concerns of the family that had a large family compound, so to speak, immediately south of us. Since that time, a significant change has occurred or is occurring in the area, that being the turnpike. This is a map showing the subject subdivision right here, and as you can see, the turnpike alignment is going to be approximately 250 feet, if not closer. Last I heard from OTA folks is they do expect service roads to be present in this area, so it's probably more like 150 feet from our southern line. What that means is the family that had these homes right here, there are currently offers on the table to buy the entirety of their property, as well as work being done on behalf of this landowner and this landowner to roll them out. So the conflict between rural and suburban development has gone away, and when we think about what is anticipated with the inclusion of service roads, it's the hope that they would generate some form of commercial development to increase sales tax revenue. Well, in order to do that, you need an increase in density. And so what we're asking for is a net of 28 acre, or 28 lots more. The old comp plan is what governed the previous application. The new comp plan has come online, and that's what's going to govern this. And if we look at the back of the staff report, the staff does a great job of going through the policies of this land use typology area. And what it says is that the square footage of the minimum lot size will allow the density of seven dwelling units per acre, which is well within the four to eight that is anticipated and desired in the urban low intensity. So when you think about it in terms of the comp plan, what we're asking is squarely within this land use designation, coupled with the fact that the protesters and the people where we had some potential for incompatibility with land uses have been gone, and now we're going to be abutting a turnpike. I would submit that what we have proposed is certainly in conformance with the comp plan and in conformance with the surrounding land use development patterns. We would ask for your approval. We do agree with both technical evaluations that are contained within the staff report.
David, where will there be the closest interchange to your specific site?
There'll be a large interchange here. I believe there will be a large interchange at 29th and Sarah, and I believe a partial interchange just west of here. There are scheduled to be several interchanges from the point that it hits Highway 152 and the point where it will be starting construction off of the currently existing turnpike.
Buck your poise, I can tell.
Derek Turner, has anyone signed up for it?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I've looked at this, talked with David, and I have some concerns. You know, I think while we have these things that may happen in the future and are planned to happen in the future, we don't know when that's going to happen. This area is still rural in nature. If you look at that picture, there's a lot of green around that. There are several neighborhoods in the near vicinity that are not R1ZL. They're large homes in very nice neighborhoods, and to me, the density that we have already in this development, one could probably argue it's not compatible now with what's around it. So I have a real concern about increasing the density further. I don't even think it's compatible with some of the development within the neighborhood. We've got some larger lots on the west end that are larger homes, and now we're crowding those with, you know, R1ZL, moving closer to them. So I just have a concern about this and really can't support it.
If I can, on the issue with... There is a lot of green space, but if you look at the image that's before you on your screen, all of this green space is platted. And so this is all green and rural, but once it's south of a turnpike, it will cease to be a rural community. You are going to see development, and probably development happen at a fairly rapid pace, would be my guess, but I do... I respect...
No, I agree. We will see development. We've seen it going north on the turnpike, but I'm not sure that we'll see R1ZL development. We'll see, you know, more residential, and I'm sure some commercial and that sort of thing. But to me, it's just a compatibility issue. I think the density that's there is more than adequate, and I don't think that we need any increased density there. Because with that, I'll recommend denial.
Any other discussion, or second to the motion?
I have to agree, and I do second the motion, but I think, you know, I don't see any reason why you couldn't develop that, but I think you need to look at the density of it a little bit closer, and, you know, I don't see any problem with developing it, but, you know, look at the density and see if that couldn't be taken care of. So I do second the motion.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
And the only thing that our PUD touches is what's outlined in bold black. Everything else is already approved. So all of this density is already approved, not necessarily built. We're only affecting these 14 acres.
I understand. Any other discussion, Commissioners? The motion is to deny item 10, I think it is. Cast your votes. It's denied.
Thank you.
Item 11 is C 6843, final plat of Bentwood Creek Villas, located west of Highway 152 and south of Southwest 59th Street.
And again, this is one that probably could have been a consent docket item, I guess.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs. Grubbs, holding on behalf of the applicant. What we have for you today is a final plat that conforms to the approved preliminary plat. We agreed to the TEs and asked for your approval.
And no one has signed up. I'll move for approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Pat, did you mean to...
I meant to vote for it.
Okay, it's unanimous in favor, okay.
Item 12, C 6839, preliminary plat of Kennard Ranch, located south of Wilshire Boulevard and west of North Council Road.
Good afternoon, Brad Reed with Crafton Toll, 214 East Main. This preliminary plat is in compliance with the current comp plan and the zoning. If you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We looked at the TEs. There is a variance requested. We are working with, currently doing the work for the addition to the south, which is Legacy. By the time the final plat's in, the idea is that they're going to construct these at the same time, so that that's not really, won't be necessarily, we'll have the second point of access to the south. If that's not, if that doesn't happen, and we can't get that entrance, we would agree to an emergency, a temporary emergency access until the time that that is in place. There's also a number 7 on there. Like I said, we're working with those people. There's a stub street on the current preliminary plat that doesn't quite match up. We've worked with them to line that up, and they're okay with that as well.
You aware of the commission's desire that common areas be centrally located so that they're accessible to everybody who's in a subdivision?
Yes, the common area is there because we're going to do detention. It falls from the south, or the northwest to the southeast. That's where the water goes. There's a current system in Legacy to pick it up. We're going to detain in that pond. That's why the common...
That doesn't answer my question about putting the amenities where they're accessible to the residents.
Yeah, we can look at that. The pond will stay there.
I'm sorry?
So the pond will stay where it's at.
Well, I understand that.
We can look at common areas centrally located.
Well, I'd like to see some sort of a redesign presented to us, showing us where the common area with amenities would be before I'd be willing to vote for this.
We can do that.
I'll move, excuse me. Until the 22nd, we allow them to redevelop the common area.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second? We have a motion and a second to continue this 30 days. We have a motion and a second to continue this 30 days?
It's two weeks.
Two weeks enough? Okay, to, what is the date that took, 22nd? Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue this to September 22nd. Cast your votes, and it's continued.
Item 13 is S P U D 914, application by Gary Owens Development, rezoned 1700 and 1800 South Check Hall Road.
Good afternoon again, Mark Grubbs. Grubbs Consulting on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you today is a single-use PUD for independent senior living. It conforms to the comp plan, and staff recommends approval. There are three TEs on there. We agree with TE one and two, or, I'm sorry, one and three. TE number two says access shall be taken from southwest 17th Street only. Within the staff report on page seven, staff made the comment that access to South Check Hall does not meet the street-to-driveway separation from southwest 17th to southwest 19th Street. I have, in fact, looked at that, and that street-to-driveway separation is requirement is 100 feet. We can meet that on the north from 17th and from the north and south on 19th Street. So I would just request that that TE be modified to say access will be allowed at 17th Street as long as we can meet the ordinance, the street-to-driveway ordinance.
JJ, any?
Well, it's not only that, it's that the comp plan also calls for reducing driveways and conflicts on section line roads.
You can see the layout of that. I'm going to, I mean, I'm going to fight a battle with fire and emergency on that if I only have one access point. So we're not looking to increase, you know, put a lot of access points onto Check Hall, but we would request that we be allowed to access that for those reasons.
So staff is suggesting that access be taken from 19th, southwest 19th?
Seventeen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we actually have well over, 100 feet is required on an arterial from a collector or a local, and we actually have well over that on the track to the south and exceed that on the track to the north. And, I mean, that's in the, it's in the city's ordinance, so we're not asking for something that's not typically permitted.
Maybe Stuart, if he's watching us back there, wants to come out. I can see where there'd be some conflict with the residents coming out on 17th Street. And then shortly to the north, the people coming out of the apartments there.
Like I say, it's a recommendation of the comp plan. It's really a call of the planning commission at that point.
Buck, any thoughts? I mean, it's your, we're in Ward Three again.
We did try to talk to traffic about this before this, and their response was to work it out with the planning commission.
Because we're traffic experts, yes. Stuart, thank you.
Yeah, I was about to say, the only comments we had relative to that application was that our desire was to take interior access from southwest 17th Street. The condition you get into when you start getting, I mean, even if you're looking at adjacent driveway-to-driveway separations along an arterial, you're looking at least at a 200-foot separation. There's a slightly different table you look at when you're looking at street-to-driveway separations, but, you know, this is a senior living facility. It's not going to be a high-traffic generator. Southwest 17th Street should provide, you know, a great form of access. And it'll help, like JJ had mentioned earlier, help minimize the number of driveway interruptions that you have, you know, that are going to be proposed along an arterial roadway.
And I mean, if it, and it does make that comment in the staff report that, from traffic, that they're not typical, you know, high generators of traffic. So on that same comment, I don't understand why it wouldn't be permissible to take access from Check Hall.
What's the problem with an access on 19th Street?
Stuart? I don't, I think, I'm not positive about this, but I think 19th Street's private.
It's what?
I think it's private. I don't think it, I'm not sure that it's a public street. Do you know, Stuart?
I didn't, I don't have that information in front of me.
Yeah. Down here, I just don't, I don't know.
Well, with the drive that you're putting on to come out on Check Hall, you wouldn't be too far stretched to pave that road there.
I just modified this exhibit to show that I understand their concern that they would have down at 19th Street. After they made that comment, I look back to that and I agree. But we have the ability to shift that up, and we're 235 feet from that street and 250 feet from that street.
Hey, Mark, are you connecting the north section there? Does that connect at the back?
This here does not connect in the back.
It doesn't? Okay.
Mr. Owen does own this track to the north, but there's some tank batteries and things back there.
So just to be real clear, I'm sorry, the conflict that you're talking about here is between this access and this access up here?
They're saying no, they're saying they don't want, they're not, they don't want any access points onto Check Hall is what traffic is requesting. I, you know, I don't know that, I don't know that I have a problem with the access on the north track, no access to there, because I could possibly move that to 17th and it not make much of a difference. But on the south track, it would, it'd make a tremendous difference for an access point onto there. Why? Because I could actually take an access point onto 17th, because I only have one access point on the north track anyway. But the south track with that long, with the one access point onto 17th, it has the ability to take another access and assist with circulation there.
Find out if southwest 19th Street is a public or private street, and whether it would be possible to take access there. That seems to me like an easy solution, if it's possible.
Can we just amend it to say if 19th Street is public, that we'll take access from there and no access will be allowed onto Check Hall? And if that's not the case, then that one access point shall be allowed in parcel two onto Check Hall?
That would not be my preference. No.
I'm just trying to take care of it today instead of having to come back before you over one issue.
Those are the only two options, I think, aren't they? I mean.
That's it? I think that's our only two options.
Janice, I think that if he comes back in two weeks, it's one or the other anyway.
Okay.
I don't think it changes.
So I would be okay with that?
Take that, your motion, then.
Make a motion to approve the application with the, you guys helped me with the wording of this.
With the, if southwest 19th Street is a public street, we will connect onto that and no access points will be allowed onto Check Hall.
If the alternative, there'll be one access point on Check Hall if in fact 19th is not a public street.
Allowed in parcel two.
Yes.
The south parcel.
Where would that access be on Check Hall? Would it be the north access, or would it be the one down by 19th?
In parcel two, the south.
The south one.
Okay, if you put an access there, and if they ever do open up 19th Street, if it's not, how far is it going to be from 19th Street?
It's approximately, if you put it between those two buildings, approximately 250 feet from both roads.
He's moving it from what's shown on your drawing to the middle of the building, to the middle of the site.
I would be.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I see. Yeah, okay.
So do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 13 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Pat, are you?
Thank you.
Pat?
Oh, you need to go green.
I think it's, I'll.
Item 14 was deferred. Item 15, C 6838, final plan of Rushbrook Section 3, located south of northwest 192nd Street and east of Western Avenue.
Good afternoon, Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll, 214 East Main, on behalf of the applicant. This is the final phase of Rushbrook development. It's got 94 lots on 44 acres. It conforms to the preliminary plat and the subdivision regulations, and we agree with the three TEs. We would ask for your approval.
No one signed up, commissioners?
I'm moving.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, S P U D 913, application by Sam Gresham to rezon 2728, North Classen Boulevard.
Good afternoon, I'm Francis Couvier with Gresham Architecture. I have some renderings I'd like to pass out.
Okay.
Under the S P U D 913, we're asking to combine several lots together, and the main restriction was a 35-foot height limit, and we're asking for 60 feet for this mixed-use project, which will have residential, restaurants, big banqueted facility, and retail.
And you're spacing the 60-foot building toward Classen and away from the residences to the east, is that correct?
The 60 feet will be on Classen itself. We do have three stories next to the east property line, which is R2, but it's a vacant lot now.
So that would be residential to the east, as I'm looking at these?
The eastern block is residential.
Okay.
Is there anyone signed up to speak on this?
No.
We have met, we have talked, we have texted, we have emailed. We've gone back and forth on just the little details of this, and even just as early as this morning, have finished some up. I had asked that they insert a little bit of verbiage into the sort of mission statement of the PUD to indicate that it is intended to be a mixed use and that it's not going to be just one of any of the things it can be. And we've worked out just a few of the details about square footage and that kind of thing, and I'm abundantly satisfied, and we'll nail down, we'll make sure that the changes that have been made are actually into the text before it goes to council. So if nobody else wants to be heard, I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 16. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Item 17, S P U D 916, application rezoned 1356 Southeast 42nd Street.
We're looking to rezon this from residential to commercial.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Bippin Patel. Address is 3030 South I-35 Service Road.
Okay, thank you.
We're looking to rezon this as, right now it's residential, and we'd like to rezon it as a commercial for a multipurpose use for lodging and retail, allowing the height to a four-story, to about 60, 65 feet height variance.
Ward seven reaches down there? Is there going to be three office buildings on this property? Is that what I see?
Those are an optional, and not necessarily, the main purpose for use is going to be lodging. So those can be moved or completely taken away.
Okay. And on the TEs, are you in agreeance with those TEs?
I'm sorry?
For the technical evaluations, the three technical evaluations?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with those?
With what evaluations?
Well, there's a height restriction.
Yes, and we like to have the height restriction. I don't know what is the height restriction.
60 feet.
Is that the maximum is allowed on that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Should be fine.
The others?
Fast food?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Fast food restaurants shall not be located within 150 feet of existing residential uses?
Not to be located, is that what you're saying? Again, the fast food is an optional, our main priority is the lodging.
Just can't put it within 150 feet of a residential zone site?
Understand.
Okay. We do have someone signed up? Oh, okay, that's.
So let me be clear, I just want to be clear. You are accepting these TEs, right, these technical evaluations? You've heard what we've said, right?
60 feet, the maximum.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 18, 66842, preliminary plan of Taylor Manor 2, located north of 23rd Street and east of MacArthur Boulevard.
I'm Randy Hill with ED Hill, representing the applicant. 510 Call Accord Drive. This is in accordance with your subdivision regulations, and we do agree with all the technical evaluations on the plat.
We do have someone signed up, commissioners. We'll hear from Martin Johnson Johansson, and then, Mr. Hill, you can come back. Sir, if you would give us your name and address, please.
Yes, it's Martin Johnson. I live at 5800 Northwest 26th Street, which is Oklahoma City. We are concerned due to the fact that this is a dead-end street that we live on. There's only like five houses that's there. All the water that comes off of MacArthur between 28th and 24th Street runs, slopes down towards 26th. So anytime you get a substantial amount of water, it comes right straight down our street, right across my driveway, into my backyard. So we've started, we put a small ditch in front of our house and to the side to where we can channel it, you know, the natural fall to the east. And any type of elevation change on that will cause the water just to continue back in on us. It is just not my property that we've got to worry about. There's a house across the street. The water stands about, if you get a good rain, it's about two feet in the front yard. And we got to where we call it English, Lake English. And then Neil's veterinarian up at the street, up on the corner of 26th and MacArthur, when they bought that land, they were required to put in a retention pond. Well, it's not working. All the water goes around the back of it, and it comes through English's property, and there's a tin horn where the water's supposed to come out on the street. It'll shoot about four feet out in the middle of our street. And our biggest concern is, is the water. Because I, you know, lived there my whole life, been there for 60 years, and it's still, it's just natural falls, all it is. And that five acres that's there, it was a good, you know... And that five acres that's there, it's, it was a good, you know, watershed. We're taking a lot of the water. We had trees that lined it on the west side that were, every summer, we had hairy hawks that came in. But of course, now the trees are gone. We have foxes, we got all types of stuff living in, you know, Oklahoma City off of 26th and MacArthur, you wouldn't believe some of that stuff. It's like living in the country. But our main concern is that a number of years back, there was a group of people that wanted to put in townhouses. Well, after they found out a lot of things, they backed out on it. Then the church that owned the land, or rebought the land, they were wanting to put a football stadium in there, in which, you know, nobody wanted one of those in their backyard, especially me with my property lining it up on 100, I think it's 150 feet, on their west, northwest quarter. And we kind of had a concern that, you know, it said that the, oh, the, the property sold for $40,000 for five acres. Well, if that was the case, there had to be a reason for it to sell that cheap. And it's the mechanical, there's no sewer, there's no drains, there's no nothing. It's just a big old field. And everything breaks from Molton Drive to the west, and then it takes and goes from my corner, it breaks and goes down the property line, down to southwest, Northwest 24th Street, and kind of cuts across there. I know years ago, the, uh, they had to do, city done something awful. I think they put a drain in on 24th and Molton to catch some of the water, but it flooded all the people out off over there every time it rains. But like I said, what we are worried about is the water.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I spoke with Mr. Martin, I mean, with Mr. Johnson, uh, about this when I found out he had an issue regarding drainage. It's really not with regard to our property, it's regarding the water that comes off of MacArthur, and he's got the retention pond, and it's got a, a pipe that's pointed right out his property. We obviously have to meet all the drainage requirements of the City of Oklahoma City and the development of our property, but I did tell him that I would send a survey crew out and take a look and shoot some elevations and see if we could figure out something that might help his situation, but it's really not part of the development of this property.
Okay. Commissioners, discussion?
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with the development. I do have some concerns about the runoff issue. Again, I don't, I don't know where the water's coming from. You say MacArthur, he says from the east, so does anybody really know?
He's up, he's upstream from us. He's at north and west of our property.
Right.
And the water is coming from MacArthur, uh, towards his property. But maybe, uh.
Curtis?
Curtis, you have something to add?
Curtis Liggins, Public Works, the water is coming from the northwest down to their site. When we review the drainage plans for the subdivision, we'll make sure that they accept the offsite water onto their site and convey it through there. But his drainage issues, whatever he would have, would not be because of this development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Curtis. Well, with that in mind, I'll, uh, I'll recommend approval of the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Hill, we'll try and give you some help.
Item 19, C-6834, preliminary plat of Brookfield Estates, located west of North MacArthur Boulevard and south of Northwest 164th Street.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Chris Anderson, civil engineer on this project. This was a preliminary plat that was continued two weeks from the last docket. One of the questions that arose at that docket was the location of our open space. We went back, did some research, and what we found was pursuant to the subdivision regulations, Article 5, Section 5, Point 12, Point 2, Sub-B, subdivisions less than 10 acres are not required any open space. And so we are under 10 acres, therefore no open space is required. We do have a common area at the northeast portion of this development that'll serve for drainage purposes, but no open space is required. We do need a variance for the length of the cul-de-sac. If the commission will remember, we did have this PUD approved in July. It was unanimously recommended for approval by the commission, ultimately adopted by the city council. And in that PUD, which is PUD 1613, the master development plan map matches the preliminary plat to a TE with this exact design of the cul-de-sac. One of the reasons we have the one long cul-de-sac is because we have an odd-shaped track, and we don't have the ability to have that second access point onto Northwest 164th. So we do agree with all the TEs. Again, we do need the variance on TE 3, but I hope that I was able to explain the open space issue.
David, there won't be any amenities then in the common area, I hope?
No, sir. Other than the pond. And this is a gated, you know, community, so there will be the pond, but that's it.
Okay, no one has signed up, commissioners?
Well, I got to protect Commissioner Bright. Will there not be any pole signs?
No, it's a neighborhood. No pole signs.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, you need a motion of variance first.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, the TE, TE 3, make a motion to adopt that.
Need a second for the motion for the variance? From someone?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Make a motion to approve, um, the application.
And a motion to approve item 19. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 20, S.P.U.D. 906, application by Josh Livingston and Rob Spencer, rezon 116 North Klein Avenue.
Good afternoon, I'm Josh Livingston, 7551 Tanglevine Drive.
I'm Ken Fitzsimmons with Test Design, 1228 Northwest 36th Street.
I recall seeing an email that suggested that you had deleted a number of the uses from this, as I recall. Janice, were you involved in that?
Uh, yes, I have. We have, uh, uh, made right changes since I turned around here. We decided to go over and attach the renderings.
We have the renderings to share to show our design intent. We're not prepared to make that a part of the permanent record for practical reasons in that in order to make our negotiations with potential tenants real, we have to go through this process, and then there could be changes made to the design based on final tenant selection, et cetera. But we've worked long and hard on this set of plans, and for our correspondence, this isn't just something we popped up last month, it's years in the making. So very committed to the site plan. Like to leave some flexibility on final elevation, design, et cetera, because, uh, by the nature of the site, we're kind of pioneering a little bit here, so.
I, I have suggested that with, you know, a building on, that the designer can set our design or a provisionary conceptual rendering, that it might be a little more comfortable to have them attached, I don't know if you can still remember, uh, like with the Commissioner Bright about this, and about the changes that we made, we can specify them. So if there's nobody else here who wants to see these changes, they can mail them.
Second motion. Now, are the uses that are intended, the ones we're now seeing in the staff report, or are there a number deleted and changed that we need to incorporate in your motion?
If you can all change, you may, they'll be there.
Okay.
And he's actually, I believe, reduced I-2, uh, how, what would be allowed in I-2? Is that correct? Motion.
Avery, a motion and a second to approve item 20. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 21 is CPA 201604, consideration of a map amendment changing the land use typology northwest of the intersection of 104th and Rockwell Avenue.
I'm Ken Bryan. I'm a planner with the City of Oklahoma City's Planning Department. I want to share with you some of the salient points from the staff report on the comp plan amendment, CPA 2016004. The request is to amend the land use plan or remove the urban reserve layer and designate the area urban low intensity. There's an associated zoning application, um, to rezon the subject area through a PUD that allows large lot, single-family subdivision, a small commercial tract as well. So just a quick reminder and a little bit of context of where we are. There's our land use topology map, and you can see the, the area we're going to be concentrating our attention on is just southwest of Will Rogers Airport, kind of between the airport and Mustang. You see the red star there near the subject area. An important component of, of looking at these types of comp plan amendment requests is, is the land supply analysis. So this is part of Plan OKC, it informed a lot of our, um, topology selection, especially as it came to the urban low intensity topology. The southwest area, you can see outlined in heavy blue there, um, along the, kind of the highway and the inner, portions of the inner loop and north across Lake Overholzer and then all the way out to the, the far south and west city limits. The yellow jaggedy line through the middle of this map is the furthest extent of the urban low intensity topology. The green polka dot area is the urban reserve, um, layer sitting on top of our land supply. So in the urban low area in the southwest, there's about 11,000 buildable acres. Many of those are currently unplatted. The absorption rate for this type of, um, this intensity of development right now, at least in the last five years, is about 300 acres per year. So that tells us that, um, that land supply is something we need to pay attention to, and we're good for the next several years. It's probably worth noting that keeping an eye on land supply is part of the recurring maintenance and monitoring that, that our group does as, as part of Plan OKC, and you'll be hearing more about that in the next few months as, as we move forward with maintenance and monitoring. So looking at existing conditions, this is the, these are the land use topologies near the subject area here at South Rockwell and Southwest 104th. So you can see the urban reserve kind of pinned in between rural low and rural medium here. You've got some, uh, employment reserve to the north and east of this subject area. It's zoned for AA. Of course, it's a quarter section, so it's about 160 acres. Uh, just a quick reminder to us about what urban reserve is. This is pulled mostly from the plan. So the purpose of that layer is to maintain large tracks of relatively undeveloped parcels until that area is ready to urbanize. What we mean by urbanize is receive a full set of urban services, but especially water, sewer, and fire. So the proposed or the requested land use topology is urban low intensity. So this applies to the, the least intensely developed areas of the urbanized portion of Oklahoma City. They still receive, of course, full set of urban services, which means public water and sewer, police, and fire response times consistent with urbanized portions of the city. The plan calls for horizontal integration of land uses in this topology and a high level of connectivity and accommodating multiple modes of transportation. So when we, when we looked at where it's appropriate to assign urban reserve designation, we considered existing zoning. And the reason we have to do that is some places are zoned for urban density or intensity, but may not meet some of the other conditions regarding urban services. So those would, if, if we came across areas like that, those are, those become UL land use topologies. So we can see here, existing zoning, it's zoned AA, there's some RA in the area, and then the PUD to the south is a large lot, a single-family subdivision. We want to look at the potential for future services when we consider where urban reserves appropriate. This shows the existing water mains in the area, so you can see there's already been significant investment in city infrastructure in this area, and the subject site is adjacent to existing water mains where they would, and they, they're planning to extend service to that area. Sewer's a little bit different situation, so I had to zoom out a little bit to see the, the entire subshed there outlined in green. This, this subshed is not yet open to the public sewer system. You can see existing sewer is there just across the, the ridge line to the east, shown in, in yellow. There's some pink in there as well, those are forced mains. So that's the, that's the situation with sewer. It's not, this area's not, not served with, with sewer yet, which means that places that may be appropriate for urbanizing would be urban reserve as opposed to urban low. We also look at fire. So we can see that Fire Station 26 sits here just a mile south of the site. It's a relatively new station, it has good capacity, good response times, not just to the subject area, but to the, to the larger, to the larger portions in, in southwest Oklahoma City. The, another concern for urban reserve is that we want to accommodate to the extent possible efficient development pattern. So we're showing kind of the west portion of the city here on the land use topology map, and you can see that places that are designated urban reserve are largely adjacent to areas that are already urbanized or have been zoned or platted for urban development. So that's, that's kind of what we mean when we say efficient development pattern. And then we looked at where, where are areas that are the most efficient to serve next? So if they're missing a service like water or sewer, where does it make sense to, to extend those, those services? And the area here we're talking about is a, is a good example of kind of the next shed over to be opened up for sewer service. So just to summarize quickly where we are as far as evaluating that site for urban low intensity, it's currently served with water, currently served with fire urban response times, but not served with sewer. Another consideration of Plan OKC is compatibility between the, the land use topology areas, and that includes some consideration for existing development as well. So lots along the western edge of this subject area would have to be slightly larger than two acres to maintain compatibility with the, the rural subdivision that's just across the property line to the west. We're also interested in the transportation system, so this part of town has pretty good access to the regional highway network, of course. There's already been discussion today about the southwest turnpike extension. You can see that there on the far northern edge of this map. Of course, the airport is, is a very short drive away from this, this part of town, and the, the arterial network is in pretty good, I was about to say it's in good shape, I'm not sure about that, but it's in, it's connected. And so it, it exists in a way that it can easily be upgraded and improved through the, over the years as, as this area urbanizes. Our quick stoplight summary slide, water green, sewer not yet, fire green, compatibility, just the cautionary note about the adjacent development to the west. Transportation, we're good for now, and contiguous with other urban low areas. This area is sort of, the subject area is sort of in the middle of this urban reserve part of this shed. So while it's not contiguous to existing urban low, it is consistent with the, the land use designation that this would be, become urban low at some point. So as far as the staff recommendation goes, because of the, the issue related primarily to sewer, we're recommending that you maintain the urban reserve layer at this time. If the urban reserve layer is removed and the urban, the area is designated urban low, we would want commitment that sewer. we would want commitment that sewer service is made available. I think Nathan and Jeff are here to, to talk a few more details about those concerns and answer questions you might have about sewer or wastewater service.
Before we begin talking about sewer, can you mention police protection?
I didn't mention it. That's because, it's not that it's not important. Obviously, it's very important. Police protection works a little more organically than...
Is the response time out there...
The response time is, is, it's okay. It's, and frankly, it's some, it's a little hard to evaluate for an area that's largely rural because they just don't have a lot of calls. Obviously, we're always interested in having good police response time, and, and, you know, they have their, their target that we try to, that they try to meet for that, and we, we try to respect that when we look at areas for future urbanization.
I just wanted to sum up, Jeff Butler, Assistant Planning Director, wanted to sum up with this slide and just kind of mention that we've met with Mr. Box and Mr. Johnson. You know, the, the issue here is that it's kind of in an awkward position because it's in a place where there's obviously development pressure. We wouldn't be here. There's a certain amount of development pressure, you know, but on the other hand, the sewer shed, it flows downward. So Plan OKC anticipated, the ideal is to have gravity flow sewer. It's cheaper in the long run, it's more efficient, et cetera. But of course, development pressure is coming from the north and the east here, and that's kind of the situation we find ourselves in. As Ken mentioned, urban reserve is, was contemplated for this area because of the lack of sewer, and it was, it was anticipated that this area would, at some point in the next couple of decades, I'm not sure exactly when, would, would obtain sewer and be able to be, have an urban density which could be anywhere from one acre lots upwards. It's also important to note, I think, that the previous comp plan did designate this as, as an urban growth area. Beyond that, if you have any questions, as Ken mentioned, Nathan Madewald from Utilities is here as well.
We have some people signed up to speak. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, pull the microphone down, please.
Joetta Pennington, 7648 Southwest 104th Street.
Okay.
I'm Lon Pennington. I live at the same address.
Okay.
The main thing that we're mostly concerned about is we moved out there and we had five acre lots, a lot of room, and keeping, we have deer that are in the neighborhood, they come up and, but as we have more and more development, like the Rio de Bella that's just across the street from this place, it pushes the wildlife further away and, and just in context with having a type of a rural, yet close to the city, living space, I was hoping that we could leave this as a rural preserve.
Thank you.
I moved out there before we even got married in the late 70s. I won't take you through all of it, but I've lived out there a long time. I've seen what goes on out there. This property also has on the diagonal a creek that runs through it. There's another one runs through the top northeast part of that. But that creek has run, I'm, I'm telling you, in 1993, it has run like a quarter mile wide. I mean, it was amazing, okay? It's not run that way since, but we've seen lots and lots of years that it gets to the hundred-year floodplain, you know, every other year. That property right there is, is, is not a good place to build a neighborhood. It's not, trust me. I've been out there, I've seen it. I've seen them dig out for ditches. I'd say, hey, hey guy, the water doesn't run the way you're, oh yeah, it runs this way. I've surveyed it. I have seen it with my own eyes. I said, partner, it runs this way. You can't make it run any other way. Oh, my, my gauge is... Anyway, they're, they're not seeing it through my eyes. Please keep this rural. I saw them in an area out there by the airport, which was by the airport, they had to tear out the whole neighborhood, buy every house in it because it was in the wrong place. This is also in the wrong place. Don't make a neighborhood here, keep it rural. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Box has signed up. What a surprise.
I don't often get to sign up.
Oh, you don't usually.
522 Call Core Drive.
Do you represent a property owner or the property owner?
The property owner. I, I think the, the people that just spoke perhaps highlight our same concerns. We had meeting after meeting with staff. We have no desire for this to be developed urban. Nobody that lives out there has any desire for this to be developed urban. We didn't care what comp plan designation it was called, but we had a development in mind, and that development that we have in mind mirrors Rio de Bella, which is a 320-acre tract immediately south of us. And I find it odd that the comp plan has an already developed tract as urban reserve. It's already developed. It's 320 acres, and our PUD matches to a T the development pattern and regs in the 320 acres south of us. In addition, there's four other plats in this area that are currently being developed, yet the comp plan shows them as being urban reserve. We have been meeting with the neighbors for the last several weeks in Rio de Bella, some others that are west, and some others that are east, and the common theme is that there is not a scenario in which we will ever want this to be urban. We brought the comp plan, we explained what urban development means if sewer ever actually gets there. I'll let Mr. Johnson explain why we don't think it'll ever get there. Mr. Butler mentioned over the next several decades, the staff report says, in a foreseeable future. But it would be significant cost to bring sewer out there. If you did, and we then tried to develop it at urban densities rather than having a handful of people upset about some of the issues, you would have sections of land of development here in these chambers protesting what we would be trying to do. There is no scenario that I can see in which an urban development on this site makes any sort of sense. I understand the comp plan is a significant broad brush, 30,000-foot view, and there were mistakes made. There were, there were, you know, certain parcels, I can think of one up in Ward 8 that was included in a certain designation, and it was just an oversight. I would submit that this is an oversight too. Again, it has to be an oversight south of us. If it's already developed, 320 acres at RA zoning to be urban reserved, well, that's never going to be developed urban unless you wipe out 320 acres of development. One of the exhibits that staff had, and I'm not sure how to cycle back through it, go back to the zoning map. One of the things that the staff does in their analysis is look at the surrounding zoning. That's how we decide what's compatible. There you go. Thank you very much. What you can see is you have the PUD at the south of us. That PUD, I can tell you, has a base of RA zoning. You have RA to the east, RA slightly north and east, you have some RA south and west. The base zoning district that we submit in our PUD is RA. We are trying to do exactly what's been done south of us, exactly what has been prevalent in this area. We think it's what makes sense. Again, there is an issue with the current comp plan in that what's developed south of us and what we seek to develop, there isn't a fit for it in the comp plan. It's somewhere between perhaps rural medium and urban low intensity. We don't think urban low intensity is appropriate, but we didn't get a, a direction from staff that there'd be any designation we could seek that they would support. And so we're not, we don't care what it's called, but what we want is to develop, to develop this site in a manner similar to all the other developments in this area.
All the other developments?
What's that?
All the other developments?
Well, if you drive out there, what you'll see is this area is developing. I mean, you've got new churches, you've got some small pockets of commercial, and they're developing with water but no sewer. They're developing in the acre-type lot range. You've got the 320, and then you have, like I said, four other plats through here. So it's not a lot of different developments, but what's out there is consistent with what we seek to do and what's, what is matched on our southern border. I do want Tim to address the sewer issue because obviously you'd have to have sewer to develop urban, even if you could get there politically. Mr. Irwin, the case you had in your ward earlier, you had serious concerns about density, and that was an urban low intensity development. I would submit to you that if this ever had sewer and the ULI designation was on there, you would have those exact same concerns. But I would like Mr. Johnson to come address the sewer issue.
I do think one thing, just, just a second, Tim. We have that development that's just south of the site you're talking about. We've come in with, on the master plan that takes another, takes a new look at the city, fresh set of eyes, so to speak, because the old plan was, what, 40-odd years old? And made land use designation decisions based upon the best information available now as opposed to what it was, you know, in some prior years. So I think if we looked all over the city, we would find some developments today that would not fit within those land use classifications which Plan OKC now applies. So there's a, I guess in my mind, a context question. I mean, they're looking at areas and saying, well, what's, where's a practical to do this and where's a practical to do that? And 10 years ago, we were looking at the city very differently, I think, than we look at it today. And I think that's an important context in which to consider situations like the one we find today. I don't disagree that that area could and should develop, but I think probably given what is in that area generally, we should be looking at AA-level zoning in that area. Just my point of view. You're not going to get sewer there as a practical matter. I mean, I know, I know what Tim's going to stand up and say. I agree with you. You're not going to get sewer out there. It's not financially practical. Maybe never, but certainly not in the next decade or more.
Sure.
But a whole lot of septic systems out there and more of that all the time? I think that's problematic. And we've got another case coming up, the DNX case, which you've got later on the agenda, and your client there doesn't want to have septic on five acre lots in that area because of the, you know, the situation with drainage and so forth. So, I mean, is it this or is it that? I mean, I've...
Well, it's, it's two very different, different things.
They're not physi, they're not that different physical situations in terms of soil and water and water table and everything else that's out there in that part of town.
You've got proximity to the river on the detachment, not so much here. You know, here, here we do have a development pattern, albeit it may not be thousands of acres, but you have a clear pattern that was established. I believe that PUD that Tim and my father did for Methan was within the last five or 10 years, and it's still being developed. And so you've got an established development pattern in this area that is not five acre lots. You do have some pre-existing five acre lots, some one, two, three to the west, but you don't have, you don't have this clear direction that it needs to be this five acre rural-type setting. That's not the comments that we found when we met with the neighbors in Rio de Bella. They were very supportive of the development, very supportive of...
They would be, but that may not...
Sure. Tim's here.
But we're being given different guidance now than we were five or 10 years ago when maybe we considered that. That's my point on the fact that we've got, on the comp plan.
Sure, but the, the issue with the comp plan, the guidance you're given is reserve. Reserve for something that everyone, I think, agrees isn't appropriate, reserve for urban development. So I don't know that reserving this land for urban development is appropriate. Maybe proved wrong. Mr. Irwin might have different ideas than I do.
Maybe it shouldn't be reserved for urban, urban development at all. That may be, that's the flip side.
Correct, and that's why when we, we met with staff, you know, we, we don't care what we call it, you know? If it's rural medium, rural low...
Of course you don't.
You know, we don't care what, what we call it, but there isn't, these one acre-type developments are very popular in this city because, you know, people like a little bit of land, but they don't want the conveniences. I mean, that was one of the things the neighbor said, is we moved out here so that our life wasn't convenient. We don't want commercial. We don't want conveniences. And so, I mean, when you have that, you've got to have something within the comp plan that fits this very popular development trend, and right now we don't have it.
Okay, commissioners, other comments, thoughts? Everyone who signed up has spoken.
Can I speak to the end to the...
So you can't talk to us from back there, I'm sorry. We can't, can't hear you.
Okay, when I, when I moved out there, I knew that the airport was there and that the river was on the backside. That's a pocket of country, okay? It's really sandy. The closer you get to the river, the more sandy it is, okay? But I knew when I moved out there that I would have to have a septic system, okay? And I would have to have a water well. I took those expenses on and, and lived, lived with that idea. And I had, had to do that, okay? Now they came, they built Rio de Bella out there, wanted to put, instead of one family per five acres that I had to live with, now they wanted to put, you know, a family on a half acres. And, and I see it snowballing into neighborhoods with houses 10 feet across, 10, 10 feet from each other, you know? And that's, that's not what, that's not what I would ask you to do, at least in my lifetime because I spent so much time making this my home in a rural area.
We understand what you're asking.
Thank you. That's all I ask.
We get that. Thank you. Commissioners?
Jeff, sorry. I'm going to make a quick clarification. A kind word for the comp plan, the densities that are actually proposed are, by definition, urban in the comp plan. So, you know, three, one acre lot, that type of thing, down to, I think, a little bit lower than that. I mean, and the other thing I wanted to mention was that, that the development to the south, there was actually a lot of consideration put in into this area, speaking as one who was involved in developing the conference of Plan to Land Use Plan. That is actually the only designation that fits urban reserve for that development to the south because it doesn't have sewer and the densities are not something that would be appropriate for a rural area. So it was intentionally designated as urban reserve. I just wanted to throw that out there for just kind of an, by way of explanation. But again, the densities that are proposed are urban densities, even though they're kind of on the larger side of urban, that's what Plan OKC contemplates as, as urban.
David?
I mean, I think that goes to, to our point is you've got a very popular development that quote, "doesn't fit" within the comp plan, yet it's being developed, it was approved, yet it doesn't fit. So perhaps we don't need a comp plan. If all we're trying to do is match what's south of us and they're designated urban reserve, then perhaps our PUD is compliant with urban reserve. I mean, I say that tongue-in-cheek, but it highlights the point that there's nothing within this comp plan that fits a very popular development trend in this city.
I think he's got a point. I mean, we see, we see more and more demand for that in my area, I think, in southeast part of town, northwest, far northwest parts of town. I think it's a real dilemma. I honestly don't know, not sure what, how we handle that, you know?
Well, one, one concern I have is septic systems on less than at least an acre lot, and that's what's coming next. And I think that's a bad precedent because I don't think that's adequate.
Who inspects septic systems to make sure they work? Is that a city responsibility or state responsibility?
I'm sorry, I did, I... I'm sorry, I did, my hearing is bad.
Who inspects?
Who inspects septic systems?
Who inspects septic systems to make sure they work?
I don't think anybody inspects them. Do you think?
I think it's the DEQ. It permits them.
Okay, so they're permitted by the DEQ.
Right, and they're allowed.
And so by one-half acre would be plenty of room if the DEQ said it was plenty of...
But they're not inspected. Once, I mean, it's permitted, but not inspected.
But it's permitted based on a size of a piece of property. Is that correct?
Yes, and I believe...
Based on the field, yeah.
Well, it's a big one, a half acre.
If you've ever had a half acre in a septic system, that's not enough space for a septic system. You can't do anything else in your yard then.
Grass always green, goes greener over the...
Yeah, but don't plan on a swimming pool or any other amenity.
You can, you can have a septic system on a half acre with city water, and that's city-county health regulations.
That's the regulation.
It does depend on...
The entire city at one time was double A, and it's gradually grown away from something like that, something else. It's just a step in that direction.
Yeah, it is. I mean, this area, even since this, the last version of the plan was introduced, this area's changed. And we've, and now we've got a turnpike coming through that wasn't part of that thought process either. I mean, not, it wasn't finalized at that time. So we're going to see more change. And really here, you know, I would agree. I mean, I, it's not urban in nature and in character. It's not, you know, having sewer there is probably something that's not going to happen for a long time, if ever. I mean, I don't know, I'm sure, well, someday. The type of development that they're discussing is something that's very popular and is, and we have in this area. Is there some other classification we can use other than urban low? You know, I don't, I don't know what our options are there. I think that this type of development is compatible with the area. It's not, you know, I understand the concerns from the neighbors. I hear it all the time, and I live out in this area, so I completely understand it. But I would much, if I lived out, as I, as a person that lives in this area, I'd much rather see something like this than, you know, some of the other options that we have moving to the area. But I guess the question is, is there another designation that allows us to consider this type of a development?
In the staff report, it mentions rural medium.
Right.
And the rural medium would allow lot sizes down to one acre.
Right.
You have to do certain things to make that happen. And one of the, we've been working with utilities on various options, one of which, of course, would be to serve this in an affordable way with sewer and how, how the financing and all that would work, and it'd be something the city hasn't really done up to this point. The other option, which was mentioned briefly, I think, in a paragraph in the staff report, is to do rural medium here. The issue with that is, is this is kind of a critical area where if we were to put sewer, utilities has modeled this up already. If we were to put sewer in there, it would go straight through the subject area, and if it were to develop as rural medium without sewer, it would likely hinder our ability to sewer things to the north. So what we, if, if there is contemplation about that, and we do contemplate talking about this entire southwest area in a, in a study session soon because of this concern such as this case raises, and also the new turnpike, it may be wise, we think, to have some discussions with, with utilities and kind of further flesh some things out.
But we're not, we're not having a debate. I'm sorry. So Jeff, you're saying if we went to rural medium, that would preclude your ability to, or the, I say, your, the city's ability to...
It, it could. I mean, we, we'd like a little more time to, to review that because, let me... I can't see very well from here, but if you can locate the site there, just south, or southwest of the airport, there's quite a bit of land, urban reserve and urban land, and also the blue striped land is employment reserve. There's quite a bit of land that would need to be sewered to develop. And that, that's our concern, is if, if the sewer line would, would, I think, need to go through this site according to the maps I've seen. And so it could have ramifications for the properties to the north if we were to, to do that. You know, maybe there could be a, an easement put through, and maybe that's not an issue. It's just something that we haven't really had time to, to work out yet.
Do we need to defer this to give them time to work it out? Or are we prepared to go forward now? Would the applicant accept urban, rural medium, one-acre lots?
I think so. I mean, we, well, we'd have, our overall gross density would be less than one lot per acre. There are some lots that are less, but we have a significant amount of preservation in the northeast portion of this site. So our gross density, and there's some provisions in rural medium that allow, if you do certain things, one of which would be preserving sensitive areas, your gross density can be around the one, and that's where we're at. We'd be fine with that. In terms of the sewer, I would believe they'd go through the creek, but I wouldn't see how that'd be an issue. The city has the power and a domain and can always go wherever they deem fit.
That wouldn't really, Pat's question, though, he was really looking for one-acre minimum lot sizes.
No, we don't want one acre.
Not overall.
Right. No, we don't, we don't want one-acre minimum. What we want is a gross density of less than one. And that, and that's what rural medium would allow, and that's one of the options we raised with staff several weeks ago.
I think we'd, I think we've been wanting to see one-acre minimum lots.
Well, what we match is what's south of us.
That's, that's not what we're asking.
Sure.
So I think that's the question for you guys.
Well, what's before the commission today is just the comp plan. There's no, the zoning isn't before the commission. Well, we can address that specifically when, when we get there. But it's my understanding that the rural medium would allow exactly what we're going to be put forward in our PUD. But if the rural medium is what this commission would feel more comfortable with, we'd be fine with that. Or rural low, whichever one it is.
I for one won't, won't vote for the comp plan change unless it's, we know we're going to have one-acre minimum lot sizes.
Well, they're two separate issues.
David, I understand. I'm just telling you, I don't want to be gamed later on by the definition of rural medium. So either you want it or you don't.
Well, you won't be gamed. I'm telling you exactly what it says and what...
I know, exactly. I know. We're saying, we want to know now that we're going to get minimum lots that are an acre. Or there are probably some no votes around horseshoe. Your choice.
Well, we can't commit to one-acre lots.
Okay.
Well, if that's the case, then I want to recommend that we deny the application.
Do we a second? The motion is to deny the application. Cast your votes. It's denied.
Next item is item 23, ordinance in public hearing pertaining to alcoholic beverage consumption zoning overlays.
Hi, Reniens with the Planning Department. I've been before you before to introduce this item back in June. We've had several study sessions about it, and went through a really brief presentation today to explain the exact changes and then go over some amendments we've made since introduction. You know, as you currently know, the ABC system, we handle alcohol beverage consumption with overlays. It's kind of a cumbersome process. It adds a lot of time. Once established, they're difficult to remove, and it's not very transparent necessarily for applicants. So what we've done is come up with some changes that will hopefully address all those issues. All right, so as we went through the, the changes, what is currently in ABC one use, which is an eating establishment, sit-down with limited alcohol, that's beer and wine, would go from an ABC overlay to a permitted use in the zoning categories you see listed For ABC two uses, which are restaurants with a full bar, it would go to a conditional use in the zoning categories you see there, which the conditions include limiting the size of the building, and that's a new addition since last time, and I'll cover that in more detail later, and keeping any outdoor seating areas away from residential areas. And then with drinking establishments, sit-down alcohol permitted, that, which were, are currently ABC three uses, they would be allowed with special permit in the zoning districts you see there. The zoning, or the special permit requires a site plan, planning commissioner view, and city council approval. They can be conditioned to, to a point, and they can be revoked with an action of council, and they expire if the cease, if the use ceases to exist. Since we introduced, we've made three changes to the ordinance. One is we added a condition to eating establishments, limiting the size of restaurants with bar to less than 15,000 square feet, that would prevent something like a Dave and Buster's or a Main Event being located next to residential. If they couldn't meet the condition of being below 15,000, they would, they could still apply for a special permit and come before this body, or they could go the route of a PUD or SPUD. We added something to the definition for drinking establishment, language to include uses that were alcohol, where alcohol consumption is an accessory use. That allows things like sports venues or art galleries or spas to come in and apply for that use. It's not just limited to restaurants and taverns. And then we've made some minor changes on, in the reference to low-point alcohol to mirror the state language that's currently in place. If the planning commission approves this today, it will go to city council and be heard over the next two months, and then with the thirty-day effective date, it would be basically the end of the year before this would become effective. So happy to answer. Any questions?
Just a quick question. Will the, any way the state's ability to enforce ABC regulations be impacted by this?
No, no, the state's powers stay the same.
We will continue to, to analyze restaurants to make sure that 50% of their income is maybe is...
Yes, sir.
Every other century unless it's become...
Exactly.
I had a lot of questions about this approach and have met with staff and Commissioner Bright, and I sat down and talked. My concerns had a lot to do just specifically with my ward and the location of so many commercial areas that would be susceptible to this more or less automatic restaurant with alcohol use that are located so close, well, and yours too. Ward seven would certainly fall within that category. But where, where those kinds of uses and that kind of zoning exists, almost sort of historical default zoning, and it's, it's very close to residential areas, and I have some concerns about that. I continue to have some of those concerns. But after looking at this, I'm, I'm persuaded that, as one of the people who've complained the most about zoning being the way that we deal with alcohol, you know, that it's time for us to take some different action. This is really kind of an interim solution until we translate the current plan into code and have, have a better way to deal with it, I think. And then the limitations that we have just based on state law, we really have kind of a limited framework within which we are able to operate here. So I'm satisfied that we should move forward with this at this point. I still have some questions, and we'll continue to meet with staff about how we're going to work them out, but, you know, I think this is probably the, the best try we have. So...
Well, the, excuse me, the regulations would permit ABC two by overlay? Is that correct?
There would no longer be an overlay. It'd be a conditional use. So if they can meet the conditions outlined, then they would be allowed.
And ABC one would, would fit the overlay?
It would be by right. So the restaurant with low point would, would be by right. It would still have to meet all the setbacks, parking requirements, things of that nature required by zoning, but it would be by right.
So ABC one is by right, ABC two is by...
A conditional use, and then the ABC threes would be by special permit.
Hopefully streamlines the process for...
Makes it a little better, Amy.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't want to discuss it anymore, if there's nobody that wants to be heard, I'll move for approval.
Well, no one has signed up. Okay, we're motion second to send this on to council.
I would, I'd just like to say that the staff has worked really hard on this, and I really appreciate it, and I appreciate all of their efforts to satisfy my concerns and questions.
Thank you.
Okay. We have motion second to approve item 23. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 24 is DNX 201601, public hearing regarding a petition to DNX 1,000-plus acres south of Mustang along Highway 4.
Good afternoon. David Box here on behalf of Walton Development. The petition before you is a petition to detach. This is a application that this commission has probably not heard before. What we have is approximately 1,000 acres over, next to Mustang. We are adjacent to Mustang. I represent a development company that owns approximately, approximately 600 acres of the 1,000 acres. Also with us is Mr. Robert Kraut, who still owns a significant amount of the land. Also with us is Melissa Helsel, who's the Community Development Director for the City of Mustang, and Mustang's Planning Director, I believe, is also here as well. So what before you, what is before you is a petition to allow this 1,000 acres to detach, meaning to not, no longer be within the jurisdictional boundaries of Oklahoma City. One of the questions that you must ask yourself in any detachment case is, is there another municipality or another jurisdiction that is willing to accept that land in the event that it is detached? The city council of the City of Mustang has passed a resolution, is my understanding, showing their acceptance if this were to be detached. I do want to go through some of the issues raised in the staff report, but I did have the opportunity to meet with most of you, and I thank you for all your time to accommodate those meetings. One of the consistent themes that I think we, we heard was, I don't, I don't know about this issue, but one concern I do have is, is it going to create development pressure on land still left within Oklahoma City? So what I set out to do through my engineer, who was Kendall Dillon, was to come up with a map to show why that concern is not real. And what we did was, we took the maps from the Oklahoma City Comprehensive Plan. You can see the subject site outlined in blue, and what is red is the area that the comp plan says frankly cannot be serviced with sewer. The orange is it's highly unlikely that it'll be serviced. So what we have is essentially a moat around the subject development. So to answer the question of, will this create more pressure on land in Oklahoma City? Because somebody might march in here saying, "Well, there's, there's urban development right next to us." The answer is no, because you don't have sewer. I had Kendall show me where the nearest sewer facilities were. They're over 10 miles away over here. It is not likely that sewer would ever get here. But the, the staff report does go through some of, I guess, what I would call perhaps cons of detachment. One of the issues raised is it proposes to divide the right-of-way along Mustang Road, Serra Road, and Southwest 119th Street. It's my understanding that the City of Mustang has stated that they would gladly accept all of Mustang Road, so we wouldn't have that issue of split right-of-way. Serra Road and 119th don't go all the way through, so I don't think that issue is present there. The next bullet point frankly surprised me. Staff said that Oklahoma City would... Staff said that Oklahoma City would forego future sales tax. To say that we're going to forego future sales tax means that they anticipate this area to actually be developed at an intensity level that would allow commercial development and would allow sales tax to be generated. That's exactly the opposite of what the comp plan says. It's not that the city is foregoing sales tax revenue, because there's no real viability of commercial development in this land if it's within the city of Oklahoma City. Now, certainly there could be a component of retail if it's detached and in Mustang, because they will be able to provide services. I think one of the interesting points that Kendall showed me, when we talk about services, if you look at the fire service availability right now, again, outlined in blue is our tract. Oklahoma City, to service this, has to drive through the city of Mustang. Now, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's fairly inefficient, I would say. It seems more natural that this tract would be in the city of Mustang. The city of Mustang is better able to provide any level of service that would be needed for this development. Now, Mr. Kraut has been working on this particular piece of land since 2005. In fact, the old comprehensive plan carved out this tract of land and showed it as a future master plan community. There was a special blurb in the comp plan. Despite his best efforts to get that to be continued into this new comp plan, it was left off. But there was at least an acknowledgement in the old plan that there was this idea of a master plan community. So Oklahoma City can't properly service. I don't think there's any desire for it to be developed in Oklahoma City. I think there's an acknowledgement that perhaps some level of mistake was made years and years ago when Oklahoma City was annexing everything they could. Perhaps it was a race to be the biggest city in the country, or perhaps there was a thought that because of the location of highways, there could be some form of sales tax being generated. That's not how it has developed. It's not how the infrastructure has been in place, and what we're left with now are far-reaching areas of the city that are too expensive for the city to serve. You can't service them, but yet you do have citizens who have needs. Somebody's going to call the fire department. They're going to have to drive all the way through the city of Mustang. We have here before us an opportunity. We have a quality developer who is perfectly capable of these large master plan communities, and if he's permitted to move and detach and go to the city of Mustang, it's our hope that he'll be afforded that opportunity. He will be able to have all the urban services served by the city of Mustang. There is no opportunity lost from Oklahoma City. The city, again, has said that we cannot and will not service it. With that, I would submit that what we're asking is certainly reasonable. They have a piece of property, one city can't serve it, one city can and is willing to serve it. I think a property owner should be able to use his property to the most reasonable and highest and best use, and in this instance, it just means that it has to be from the city of Mustang and not the city of Oklahoma City. We're here to answer any questions. We would appreciate any support and would ask for approval of our application. Thank you.
David, question for you.
Yes.
In the event of approval, Oklahoma City would clearly like to have it conditioned upon a written agreement between Oklahoma City and Mustang as to how issues?
Sure.
Like Mustang Road and others would be covered.
Absolutely. Those would all have to be done through resolutions by the city of Mustang, city council, and they have, my understanding, approved the one resolution saying that they would accept it. There may have been another resolution on that Mustang Road issue, but there's only so many resolutions they can continue to pass on a hypothetical situation. But I would not be worried that there would be any problem with proper coordination.
Well, I mean, again, I'm saying if we were to approve it, I think that we'd need, that would have to be a condition of the approval from the standpoint of Oklahoma City.
Sure. That's fair enough.
Another question. Put the fire service map up again for a second, the one that you showed. Or?
Kendall got me so many maps here.
I was intrigued by a comment you made, which was, the only way Oklahoma City can service that area with fire is to come through Mustang.
Because they could go around the long way.
Yeah. So there's clearly a certain amount of real estate there that's more efficiently served by fire coming through Mustang before you get out to the edges of the city of Mustang and go around it.
Right.
Would you not expect that that additional land would probably come up for detachment as well?
Not necessarily. You've got a ridge that runs through here, and so there's only a certain amount of land that would actually be able to be served by urban services. So I don't know that if you are a rural community out here, like we already have to the west, it's already developed, or own land to the east that can't be served, I don't know that there would be this rush to want to be in Mustang. I think here you're, I know the word unique is one that gets thrown around here, but I think we do have a unique situation here because of this land can be sewed and other land cannot.
So hypothetically, how much of that, how much of the land beyond the boundaries of the site that you're interested in could Mustang realistically serve with urban services, including a sewer?
From what I understand, the ridge runs approximately right here.
So anything west of that they could serve?
I don't think they can serve west because it's already developed. I mean, that's the issue primarily to the west, is you have some subdivisions that have already been approved and developed through here.
Okay.
And perhaps they, I mean, perhaps they would want to be in Mustang. I doubt it, but I don't think that fear is present west.
Not fear, it's, I'm just, question, I'm just trying to understand what might come from this as opposed, it's not a fear. And I don't know what the commission's going to do yet either, so I mean, that's another question.
I don't think you'll see it.
So we won't see another 1,000 or 2,000 or 3,000 acres?
I don't think so. And south of us, it's the river, and so you've got river bodies.
Yeah, you can't go too far south, I know.
And so again, it's almost as if this is a bit of an island, so to speak. It's on a real high, if you've been out there, and kind of sits alone. Which is why Mr. Kraut had picked this land, because it's a beautiful land, sits high, and would allow for a nice development.
I need to answer the question probably of the staff. We presently sell Mustang water, is that, isn't that correct?
Nathan Manuel with the utilities department. Yes, we have a wholesale water agreement with Mustang.
Do we make a profit off of that sale?
We don't make a profit on any sales. It's all cost of service based.
It's swapping dollars, if you will.
We would look at, yeah, whatever charge they would sell it to them would have to be whatever they determined was cost of service for them to serve that area.
Do we make a profit on any of the water we sell to the adjoining cities?
No. We don't, we aren't legally allowed to make profit on water sales. We do cost of service based water rates.
Okay. You mentioned the fire would have to come through Mustang or the long way around.
That's what David is saying.
That would also have to be with the police as well, wouldn't it?
I would think so.
I believe so, because I'm not aware of any police stations west or south or east of this site.
And I think one of the fire stations you had on that map doesn't exist yet.
I think it's, I think it's proposed.
It's proposed, but it's not there. The one on Richland Road out west, far west, that's not actually there yet.
I would like to hear some, one of our staff, just a little bit of exactly why you are putting a denial on this.
Ken Bryan, Oklahoma City Planning Department. I could just, want to click through a few of these. Mr. Box summed up the issues at hand pretty clearly. One of the concerns that we had from the very beginning when this petition first came up quite a while ago was the issue of the shared right-of-way. In other words, half of a, half of a right-of-way being in one jurisdiction and half being in another. We have several instances around the city where that situation exists, and it does make maintenance fairly problematic. We've actually spent a good deal of time annexing and de-anexing just slivers of right-of-way over the past 20 or 30 years, and Mustang is a great example of that. As you know, 89th Street and 59th Street, one is fully in the city of Oklahoma City and one's fully in the city of Mustang, and then the same is true for county line and the west boundary as well. So that's been one of our concerns. That was actually a concern of the city of Mustang as well, and I'm sure that they're willing to answer any questions you might have from their perspective. Mr. Box did mention that that issue doesn't apply to southwest 119th or to Serra Road because they don't go through. They don't go through, but there's still statutory right-of-way on those section lines, and we would want to make sure that the boundary is on one side of that right-of-way or the other. So for whatever that's worth. So that's one of the concerns. And then there's the concern for service islands, and so that's sort of what we're talking about here, where fire has to drive through the city of Mustang to respond in this area. And carving out that little piece to the south doesn't really alleviate that. I mean, there's still significant responses, as you can see on this map here. That's five years' worth of police and fire calls, priority one calls only, to this area. So, you know, we will continue to respond to public safety calls in this area. Let's see, the last thing is, there's always a concern about de-anexing land that is potentially suitable for development regardless of when that development occurs. I mean, it could be 50 or 100 years from now, as far as we're concerned. So, and the city manager's office and council always want to respect, you know, those decisions that were made in the past about the city, you know, the city boundaries and the size of the city and all of those things. And if we're going to make changes to that, do so in a very pragmatic and purposeful way. So that's where, that's kind of where staff came from on that, if that answers at least part of your question.
Mr. Chairman, to your point, in speaking with the representative of the city of Mustang, perhaps if there is a motion made, one of the things to give the city some comfort is, it would be contingent upon two things. Not only the city of Mustang accepting the land, but also that proper coordination between the municipalities, that's both satisfactory to both municipalities, must take place as well.
Well, not being a city attorney, I'm not going to sit here today and say exactly what I know Oklahoma City would want to include in that document. I have no idea.
Sure.
But it would certainly have to be contingent upon a mutually acceptable agreement between the city of Mustang and the city of Oklahoma City.
Absolutely.
As to whatever range of issues, either municipality believes need to be included in that agreement.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I can't sit here and think for the city council of Oklahoma City today, nor the municipal councillor's office, but if there's a vote to agree to detach, as you used the term, I certainly want to reserve for our city the right to have an agreement that's acceptable to them, just as Mustang wants the same.
And we're fine with those conditions being placed on it.
I say that well enough, Susan?
Well, setting those conditions, I would move approval.
Pardon me?
Setting those conditions, as you outlined, I would move approval.
Okay. Second motion. Ready to vote, commissioners? Cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
It passes? Okay. And that concludes all the items for individual consideration today, commissioners. So, planning commissioners, anything for us? Planning Department, you're not the planning department, you're Development Services. Anything for you, from you? Jeff, anything from planning? Municipal councillor? Motion to adjourn? We're done. 3:39.